We'll call this meeting Lima City Council to order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the emigration by Counselor McLean, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Everyone bow their head. Heavenly Father, bless us as we do the good deeds of the city. Keep your Spirit within every councilperson in the administration as we vote on each matter before us tonight. Dear Lord, keep our blessed Spirit over our entire city and all of Allen County as we go through our daily business. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Gordon.
Here.
Counselor McLean.
Here.
Counselor Low.
Here.
Counselor Crayer.
Here.
Counselor Adams.
Here.
Counselor Glenn.
Here.
Counselor Miles.
Here.
And Counselor Nixon.
Here. There are no amendments to tonight's agenda. We will start with the consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that Item A be received, filed, and approved, and Items B and C be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve Item A and to receive and file Items B and C. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move that communication number one be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments for specified parcels.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move that communication number two be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for budget amendments.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that communication number three be received, filed, and legislations on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number four.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for budget cash transfers.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that communication number four be received and filed legislations on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number five.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Sheriff's Office.
Mr. President.
Counselor Miles.
I move that communication number five be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Director of Community Development regarding the meeting scheduled for the CDBG Home Action Plan.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move communication number six be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to oppose the elimination of CDBG and home programs.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move that communication number seven be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number eight.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to enter into an agreement with Arsene and Associates.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move that communication number eight be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number eight. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
If I could ask Mrs. Crotty to...I talked to her earlier. She gave me a number. I noticed there...
Yes, the total amount of the proposed contract is $28,525.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Adams.
Mr. President.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes, did they get their tax credits sold yet? You know...
I can't answer that specific for you. I mean, they did receive additional tax credits from the state. So my understanding is that they have all of their financing in place, and we're still planning on closing taking place here within the next couple of weeks.
Okay. So that mean they got them sold, or they got some sold, they didn't get some sold. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Glenn. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number nine.
From the Chief of Staff regarding legislation to enter into an agreement to apply for Clean Fuels Ohio Grant.
Mr. President.
Counselor Miles.
I move that communication number nine be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 10.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Allen Soil and Water Conservation.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that communication number 10 be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number 10. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
If I could ask Mr. Elstro. We had spoken earlier this morning. When reading this, as I expressed to him, I had some excitement in hearing of the additional coverage of four, five, and six. And I have an issue in the ward in the 900 block of East Second Street, and I was hoping if this would help in resolving that problem with the stormwater. And he was going to check and get back with me.
Mr. Elstro.
Mr. President. Ms. Adams, this contract covers the responsibilities that we are beholding to the EPA due to the Clean Water Act of 1972. And it calls for us to perform certain tasks and obligations to, for public education and outreach, public involvement and participation, elimination of illicit discharges, construction site stormwater runoff, post-construction storm management, and pollution prevention and good housekeeping. And this is the fifth year that we have contracted with Allen Soil and Water District to perform these duties for us and with us. And that, in part, helps us meet the EPA requirements that we have for our stormwater obligations. The specific projects that you inquired about, Ms. Adams, are capital projects. And there are actually two in your ward that we have our eye on. The one is the...the first one that you referenced is along Second Street between Milburn and Carlisle. And that project that has caused flooding to some of those neighbors, the cure at this point, we believe, is about $45,000. The work that Allen Soil and Water does does not affect it, except to the extent that the additional funds they bring into us allows us to keep our capital funds focused on capital and not on these tasks. There's another project just down the street from that that is actually even more severe, and that is along Milburn, Third de Hope. And that fix is about $45,000...or, excuse me, yes, about $35,000. So we're still searching for and tuning in the exact engineering remedies for both of those projects, but the short answer is no, this contract does not help, except that we don't have to take additional funds to get these obligations done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Elstro, before you sit down, is there any other discussion? Because I've got a question on the communication. Can you clarify the multiplier rate? If we're contributing $130,000, then a multiplier is 1.7. .7 is $91,000, the state fund.
Well, that is the accurate markup as far as the $91,000. For every dollar that is put in, there's a state program that we can access through Soil and Water where they match it with...help me here, if you would please.
The matching dollars come from the Ohio Soil and Water Conservation Commission and the State General Fund. And the amount for this contract here that we are hoping to see is 60%. We're anticipating a 60% match on every dollar. So if there is a reflection to 70% in that contract, I do apologize.
Okay. The rate stated, then, is wrong. It should be .7, not 1.7.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Just wanted to make sure I can still do math.
You've got it. You've still got it.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 11.
From the Deputy Director of Utilities regarding legislation to advertise for bids for contract for landscape repairs.
Mr. President.
Counselor McLean.
I move that communication number 11 be received and filed and authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number 11 and to authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. There's a petition.
It's an annexation petition from Bath Township to the City of Lima, petition for by Maplewood, MHC, LLC, RCCC, Limited, SEDC, LLC, and Investments LLC, Derek A. Yonkman, agent for the petitioners.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that this petition be received and filed and authorization for any appropriate legislation to follow.
Second.
The motion in the second...what was the phrase you said?
The authorization of any appropriation of legislation to follow.
The motion in the second is to authorize the...any legislation that is necessary for the appropriation of the land involved. Correct. Okay. That was close.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
No. No.
We twisted that around. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Resolution...I'm sorry, we have reports of officials. Jason Gar...
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Lima Police Department Summer Police Academy is a four-day school geared towards high school-age students that wish to pursue a career in law enforcement. The Summer Academy is cosponsored by the Lima City Schools but is open to all students in Allen and surrounding counties. The academy's purpose is to expose students to different aspects of law enforcement so that students can get a well-rounded look into the job of police officer. The police department feels it is important to not only show the exciting aspects of being a police officer, but to show these students the one tool you will use every single day more than any defensive weapon or patrol cruiser is their ability to communicate. As an officer, I cannot count the times in my career when my ability to communicate helped me diffuse a stressful situation, forge a relationship with a victim, and help solve numerous crimes. The importance of speaking with people, taking the time to listen, and respecting a person's opinion, even when that opinion differs from our own, is immeasurable. No statistic can quantify the success rate, but the smiles, handshakes, and hugs are proof enough for me that the situation was handled in the proper manner. Relationship building is the foundation of community policing, and communication is one very significant aspect of building those relationships. The goal of the Summer Academy is to show the young people of this community that our officers are trustworthy and honest, and to give all the students a better understanding of why police officers do what we do and the reasoning behind our actions. This is the third year for the academy, and the dates for this year's session will run from June 20th through June 23rd. Classes will begin promptly at 9:00 a.m., and they will finish around 2:30. Some of the topics that will be covered are traffic stops, pedestrian checks, tactical approaches, room entries and building searches, defensive tactics, canine demonstrations, SWAT team demonstrations, crisis negotiation team demonstrations, firearm safety and range instruction, TASER demonstration, actual cruiser video reviews and critiques, fingerprinting and fingerprint recovery, and bicycle safety. The speakers will include Chief Kevin Martin, investigators from the Drug Task Force, LPD detectives and identification officers, and recovery coaches from Coleman Health Services. The field trips will include a trip to Crosshairs where instructors will teach students tactical approaches with Nerf guns. We will also take a trip to Road State College with School Commander Rick Coley, and the students will process indoor and outdoor crime scenes and have a chance to experience different scenarios through a firearm training simulator. The cost is free to all participants, and lunch will be provided daily. Registration will begin in early May, and students will have the option to fill out registration at their school, or they have the option to register online. Please continue to check the Lima Police Department's Facebook page for updates on the academy. I also wanted to tell about another event that we have. It's going to be this Saturday. Berry Electronics is hosting a charity video game tournament. It's going to be on April 29th. It's going to run from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. This tournament will feature competitions in Mario Kart 8 and Super Smash Brothers, and the entry will...and the entry fee is $10. All participants will receive a T-shirt, and trophies will be given out to the winners. Berry Electronics is also raffling off a Nintendo Switch that's $5 a ticket, and all the proceeds will be donated to the Lima Police Department Summer Police Academy. Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Crayer.
I would like to know if members of council could also sign up for this class.
Sure.
Thank you.
You are always welcome.
Thank you for that.
Mr. President.
Counselor Miles.
I didn't hear the number of participants you were expecting or the age group.
That's...it's going to be high school age. That will be incoming freshmen to graduating seniors. And we are hoping...we're going to limit the class to about 50 people this year.
Okay.
51 for you.
51.
Very good.
Yes. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Resolution 317.
A resolution opposing the elimination and reduction of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development programs that are vital to our community programs and residents of the City of Lima and throughout our nation.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
Before we go any further, I would like to ask Mrs. Crotty to come up and share a few words about this resolution.
We can do that under discussion.
Or under discussion. Okay.
Do it the proper way, so we need to have the motion first.
Okay, okay. I'll go back. So I would like to move this resolution to be adopted on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to adopt Resolution 317 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? As you stated...
Ms. Crotty, would you please comment?
Thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity just to add a little bit, to emphasize the importance of these programs, which I'm sure you're all aware of. You've seen the benefits of them. I outlined in the letter some specific information based on this year's allocations, but I just wanted to take a little look back and point out that for housing programs in Lima, over the past decade, or going back to 2005, we have spent over $5.6 million on programs, loan programs to assist, and grant programs to assist with emergency repairs, with home updates, and to also provide down payment assistance through First Home Lima. That alone, out of that $5.6 million, First Home Lima is...has been 1.575 million, almost 1.6 million, since 2005. And that, you know, has been to promote homeownership. We've talked a lot about, you know, rental issues in town and how we'd like to see more homeownership. This is a program that actually does help to promote that. And along with that, we provide housing counseling, which has cost the city over the past 10 years $380,000. We have also spent just shy of $1 million on demolition. That's typically about 10 or so, 10 to 12 a year. Dilapidated homes. We do not do commercial structures, but dilapidated homes have been demolished using CDBG dollars. We've leveraged...we've used $3.9 million to leverage other funding to provide streets and sidewalk repairs and upgrades that assist disabled individuals. We've spent $350,000 on police support services, which is to reach out to the community, to educate them on crime and safety issues, and to deal with some of the gang issues that we have in the community. We've also spent almost $300,000 on fair housing, which helps to protect minority populations and to ensure that landlords are being fair in providing rental housing. I just want to say, you know, I can't take credit for anything because I'm new here, but Lima has done a very good job being accountable and using CDBG and home dollars the way they were intended, which is to assist low to moderate income populations and to remove slum and blight. I think, you know, there's been some talk in the news about how in some other communities it may be used in ways that people don't find as beneficial or have concerns about. But definitely here in Lima, you know, it's benefited the most vulnerable populations, and we'd definitely like to see it continue. Thank you.
Should you have a quick add?
No, sir.
Is there any further discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Low.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Resolution 317 has been adopted on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 7517.
Loving special assessments for property maintenance co-charges on premises in the City of Lima.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move that ordinance 7517 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 7517 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Low.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 7517 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 7717.
Loving a special assessment for demolition charges for dangerous structures in the City of Lima.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move that 7717 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 7717 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Low.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 7717 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 7817.
Authorizing the transfer of cash between certain funds as herein described.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that ordinance 78-17 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 7817 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Low.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 7817 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 7917.
Amending the 2017 annual budget.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that ordinance 79-17 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 7917 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Low.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 7917 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 8017.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a temporary easement agreements with the Wogan Group.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that ordinance 8017 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 8017 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Low.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 8017 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 8117.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Arsene and Associates.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move that ordinance 8117 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 8117 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Put that before.
Yeah.
A second.
Just say so moved.
You have to say so moved.
So moved.
A second. Okay. The motion, there's a motion on the floor to amend ordinance 8117 in Section 1 by adding the following words, not to exceed $28,525, and to allow submission of a clean copy. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Can you, who had the motion?
Rebecca.
Do you withdraw your motion and restate it as amended?
I can't withdraw my original statement. I withdraw my original motion.
You had the second on that.
I did.
I withdraw my second. All right.
Mr. President, I will, I move that ordinance 8117, what am I supposed to do?
Pass.
Oh, pass as amended, on its first reading.
Second.
There you go.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 8117 on its first reading as amended, and to allow the law director to provide a clean copy. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Counselor Glenn?
I just want to make sure that this won't be no problem if we don't have these tax credits sold at all. They're not being sold right now. So would that be a problem, I'm going to support it, no problem supporting it, but I'm just hoping that the tax credits get sold. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Glenn. Is there any further discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Lowe?
Yes.
Counselor Crayer?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Glenn?
Yes.
Counselor Miles?
Yes.
Counselor Nixon?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Ordinance 8117 has been passed on its first reading as amended by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 8217.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation for purchase of rock salt.
Mr. President?
Counselor Gordon?
I move that ordinance 8217 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 8217 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Lowe?
Yes.
Counselor Crayer?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Glenn?
Yes.
Counselor Nixon?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Ordinance 8217 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 8317.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Allen Soil and Water Conservation District.
Mr. President?
Counselor Gordon?
I move that ordinance 8317 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 8317 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Lowe?
Yes.
Counselor Crayer?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Glenn?
Yes.
Counselor Nixon?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Ordinance 8317 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 8417.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with System Innovators Incorporated.
Mr. President?
Counselor McLean?
I move that ordinance 8417 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 8417 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Lowe?
Yes.
Counselor Crayer?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Glenn?
Yes.
Counselor Miles?
Yes.
Counselor Nixon?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Ordinance 8417 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 8517.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Board of Allen County Commissioners and the Allen County Sheriff's Department for a regional bomb squad.
Mr. President?
Counselor Miles?
I move that ordinance 8517 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 8517 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Lowe?
Yes.
Counselor Crayer?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Miles?
Yes.
Counselor Nixon?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Ordinance 8517 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 8617.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Clean Funds Ohio for the submittal of a grant application to the local government innovation fund on behalf of the City of Lima and various community partners to fund feasibility study examining cost-saving opportunities from weight vehicle, alternative fuels, and technology use.
Mr. President?
Counselor Miles?
I move that ordinance number 8617 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 8617 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor?
The, this references Clean Funds Ohio, it should be Clean Fuels Ohio.
Okay, is it just in the caption, or does it's in Section 1 also?
It's in Section 1.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we amend the ordinance throughout to strike the word "clean funds" and replace it with "clean fuels" in the caption and in Section 1, and any other place that I may have missed in this ordinance, and to authorize the law director to prepare a clean copy.
Second.
Here's the motion, the second, to amend. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to amend? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries.
She just needs to restate her motion then.
Counselor Miles, could you restate the motion?
I moved that ordinance 8617 be, as amended, be passed as amended.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 8617 on its first reading as amended.
I had Ms. Adams down the second one, but that's okay, I changed it.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion to pass the ordinance as amended? Will the clerk call the roll?
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Lowe?
Yes.
Counselor Crayer?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Glenn?
Yes.
Counselor Miles?
Yes.
Counselor Nixon?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Ordinance 8617 has been passed on its first reading as amended by an eight to zero vote. There we go. This is Lanius Business, Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of items. You know, if you haven't been downtown, there's been some major changes, and it's looking very nice. It's something we've been waiting a long time for, and I'm glad to see it happening. So get down to town, take a look. Looks like they planted a little bit of straw for some grass, and poor Long will have a little grass out there, I hope. The other thing I've got is to discuss a moment with the mayor's debate that's going to be the 26th. That's going to be at the City Club from 5:30 to 7:30, I believe is the time. So if you haven't made your minds up, now's a good time to get out and determine who you want to vote. Early voting is still out there until the first, and of course, everybody get out and vote on the second. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor McLean. Counselor Lowe?
Thank you, Mr. President. The first thing I would like to say to our president, the city council, is my condolences to the Nixon family, to the loss of your loved one. I did have previous schedules, and I did not know until the last minute, actually, but again, my heart was with you, even though I was not there.
Thank you.
I would like to ask that, well, I'd like to make a motion to the Traffic Commission to do a traffic study on the traffic light at North Main and Grand Street. I believe that there is some timing issues. I'm not certain. There has been a great number of wrecks and near misses at that corner, and I really would like to do a study on that light, so we don't lose a life there often at that intersection. I would like to see that light slow down. I didn't know.
I have a question. Do you want to do, I guess, is the appropriate place the Traffic Commission or the Engineering Department? Mr. Elstro?
The Engineering Department will do that study, sir.
Okay. Okay. I'd like to make a motion that the Engineering Department do a traffic study on the traffic light at North Main and Grand Street, please.
So is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Please. The motion, the second, is to direct the Public Works Director to have the Engineering Department do a study on the traffic signal at North Main and Grand Avenue?
Yes, sir.
And report back to council?
Yes, as a whole.
Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
I'm also asking, this would go out to our chief, I don't care, okay, our chief of police, I had spoke with State Patrol, and they had, did some stops on North Union between Grand and East Wayne. There's no traffic lights, so everybody uses that as the highway. And I'm asking that we get some more enforcement in that area, please. I'd hate to see one of these kids coming from school get hit. Okay. So if you would, please, May 8th at 5:00 PM, I am calling a Neighborhood Concerns meeting. We'll be three topics. We're going to do our best to keep it to an hour. The first two shouldn't take that long, but these, one of the subjects is laws pertaining to grass blown in the streets, the clippings, and any possible fines that may be acquired, public parking policies, and also the landlord registry.
And, one more. I, I just question, have all those been referred to your department? I know the landlord one has.
And the parking one.
And the parking ones.
Parking ones.
The grass ones. The grass would be, yeah, make motion for that.
Yeah, you just need a motion to refer it to your.
Okay, I want to make a motion to refer the laws pertaining to grass blown in the streets and any possible fines to the Neighborhood Concerns Committee.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to refer the issue of grass clippings blown into the street and any associated fines that might be necessary to the Neighborhood Concerns Committee. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries.
Okay, one last thing. The Observatory over Skidmore Park, had an event Sunday where they presented Rudolph Foods with a plaque of appreciation. They had made a donation of $5,000 to the Lima Astronomical Society to help with the purchase of some equipment that was desperately needed over there. I just want to say hats off to those guys. The president is here this evening, Mr. Eugene. He's been in contact with me. There's some great things that should be happening. We've been a little frustrated on the timely manner that they've been taking care of, but I did receive a list this evening, and I will be talking to the director and make sure that some of those things are followed up on. He'll let me know some more information. They did take a tour through the observatory. You guys just weren't a part of that. Okay? And that's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Lowe. Counselor Crayer?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'm going to remind the public, or let the public know, if you are interested at all in finding out about how you can acquire some of these, or how you're eligible to acquire some of these CDBG funds, May 1st is the community meeting that we're going to review the data sources, and lots of things are going to happen, and then application briefing, because that proposal must be submitted to council by 5:00 PM on May 19th. So I know there are several organizations who spend their time, they follow their paperwork, they file their paperwork on time. I continue to request their presence here, even if they filed their paperwork on time several years already, just come and make sure you're up to date, there isn't anything new. You know, all these requirements can become more advanced as the dollars become smaller. So please invest in your organization and be prepared and know what you're looking for, because your deadline is May 19th, 5:00 PM. That's one. I'd also like to thank the, all 400 people that came out to the Ottawa River cleanup on Saturday. It was a great day. Ms. Adams and I were inside trying to hustle people to their sites as fast as we could. I saw pictures later on of the line just coiled around out in the parking lot, and it was really wonderful to see. It's wonderful seeing people walk by and organizations involved. So I'd like to thank everyone, not just the board that put that together, which was a great opportunity, but everybody who came out and worked and gave up their Saturday morning to be a part of that. And then lastly, the Riverside North Neighborhood Association has two meetings left in the summer. One will be May 4th. Rachel Gilroy, the Allen County Treasurer, is going to come talk to our organization about the progress of demolition, how things are going, and what neighbors can expect from that program. If you're all interested to ask her questions or hear what she has to say, I welcome you to come. We will be meeting at 7:00 PM at the Red Cross, just down the street. We do bring snacks, so there's an ethical bribe to that. Come and hear what she has to say, meet some of Lima's greatest volunteers. Riverside North has been around for at least 22 years, 23, is it 23 years? It's been around for just quite some time. And the people who still carry that legacy, who are still involved, I am much too grateful for them. I've learned a lot from them. I am grateful to be around them, and they will be with us on that, I'm sorry, that Thursday. So the first Thursday for the 4th of May, 7:00 PM, Red Cross, Rachel Gilroy, come out, have snacks, and meet some of Lima's best. And, Mr. President, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Crayer. Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to piggyback on the Ottawa River, acknowledge Autumn from the city, Beth from the board, and heading that up and getting the publicity out. Great volunteers. Another counselor was there, Counselor Miles, she actually worked and went out and picked up.
Got wet.
And got wet. And thank you for your volunteering, but I wanted to acknowledge that. I need to refer a request to the Traffic Commission to do a study of the speed at Roosevelt and Prospect, in hopes to support making that intersection a four-way stop by adding the signs on Prospect.
Second.
Thank you.
I was trying to put my.
Picture.
So the motion, the second, is to refer to the Traffic Commission, request for a traffic study and placement of a four-way stop sign at Roosevelt and Prospect.
Yes.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion? I'm just going to clarify something, because some people might be wondering why this is going to the Traffic Commission and Counselor Lowe's request didn't. Counselor Lowe's request already has a traffic device there. It's a matter of an engineering study to determine whether the timing and other issues are correct. This is the placement of a new, a change in an intersection going either from a two-way, two-way, four-way, or for placement of new signals. So, just so everybody understands, that's the difference as to where things go. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries.
Also, Citywide Pride is coming up, and I'm just going to announce the first weekend. It's from 9:00 to noon. We have four sites. The Lacknip Resource Center on West Spring Street, the Literacy Council at 563 West Spring Street, Forest Park Church at Linden between Collins and Roberts, St. Mark's United Methodist Church at 1110 Medcalf Street. That is, the sponsor of that is the Northside Neighborhood Association. The Lacknip Resource Center location is sponsored by Lacknip, and the Literacy Council location is sponsored by Riverside North Neighborhood. That is May 6th. You will need to bring a utility bill or driver's license showing your address to show You are allowed up to 10 tires, and trees, limbs, brush, and shrubs will be accepted at South Collins Street as well. You cannot bring appliances, large furniture, chemical waste, household oil, paint, or car batteries. So please look in your garages, in your backyard, start collecting, and that's May 6th from 9:00 to noon.[1562.08]